It's six thirty, we have a quorum. One is, one person is missing, I'm sure, he will show up a bit later.
I have a text from Mark, he's on his way.
Okay. So, we'll open the meeting. And first up, Mr. Dwyer is who?
I have Mike Dagden, who I believe is working with Kurt.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, fine.
Yeah, so what I'd like to do on behalf of Kurt and his group is just provide you with essentially of an overview of the development of the, or what we're calling the renovation of 401 Russell Street. May I share my screen?
Just a sec, okay, go ahead.
Okay, can everybody see that?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a rendering that essentially we put together showing what we believe would be a good plan. As, as you had heard Kurt talked about. And essentially what this concept shows is a three-story office building. Essentially located pretty much in the footprint of the existing Howard Johnson's restaurant. I'm going to zoom in a little bit here, and what we did is we actually superimposed the graphics over the ortho plan. So it kind of gives it some definition with respect to some of the underlying features and existing detail that is out there. So just to give you a little orientation, Russell Street is over here to the left. The two existing entrances to the Howard Johnson's facility, there's a, there's a curb cut right in here. That's going to actually be closed off with this project, this is going to be all green space in the front. And we're essentially going to retain the existing egress that's located up in this area here. The existing Staples Retail Facility is actually off the page at the upper portion here. And this is the existing right-of-way access that goes out to Westgate Center Drive. And that also is going to be maintained as part of this project. And lastly, Midas, the repair facility is located down here. So obviously, one of the challenges that we have with this project is across the back here, we've got a considerable wetland resource area. That will have to be reviewed as part of a notice of intent filing that, that we'll file with your conservation commission for the activities within the hundred-foot buffer. But just to kind of talk about some of the specifics here, so essentially, the existing Howard Johnson's building is going to be removed in its entirety and will be replaced with this new three-story structure. The main entrance to the building essentially will be in the rear here. With some accessible parking spaces across the back here. We've laid out the parking area based upon providing access for a typical fire department vehicle, so they would be able to essentially get through the site in here. The site generally slopes from north to south, so essentially, we'll be maintaining the existing topography. And stormwater management is going to be addressed through a stormwater management basin that will be constructed back along the edge of the parking area. And with this particular project, we were actually able to achieve a twelve percent, roughly twelve percent with this planned reduction in impervious cover. So, you know, essentially, out of the box, we have a pretty significant reduction in peak flows from stormwater runoff. So, one of the objectives here with stormwater management is to provide stormwater quality enhancement. And, you know, we need to do that to comply with DEP's stormwater management standards. Part of the studies that we're undertaking with this project is we are in the midst of preparing a traffic impact study, recognizing the proposed use is going from off, is, is going from an existing hotel to proposed office, so essentially, we're looking at the intersections on the public roadways that are adjacent to the site. Most notably, the existing access drives into the site, the signalized intersection that's, that's up off the page here at Westgate Center Drive. So, we're analyzing that to ensure that there's going to be no dramatic impacts as a result of traffic generation. And I think the good news is, at least on a preliminary basis, is there's no indicators that, that we're going to significantly alter the level of service, particularly along Route Nine, as well as Westgate Center Drive. So, I think, you know, that, that's kind of a brief overview of the project. I mean, obviously, we'll be coming for, before you with a formal site plan submission and filing. And as I had mentioned previously, we're also going to be filing with your conservation commission for a notice of intent. So, you know, I think with that, I'd be happy and/or Kurt would, would be happy to entertain any questions that you may have.
I just got, you know, basically two, what, what is your guest of, best guess of a timeline?
So, I am, yeah, I, I think, I think there's a lot of stars that have to line up, Jim, I don't, this is not a hundred percent go at this point. You know, we're not, we're not going to be doing anything unless we have a tenant. And there's, there's some stars that need to line up there. If, if it all goes well, it's next year, let's put it that way.
Okay, um, what, what is your best guess of what the building will look like?
You know, I actually, we, we have a, we have, I think it's Kuhn Riddle doing some elevations for us. And frankly, we haven't got to that point yet.
Okay.
I think, we'll have, you know, that'll come down, you know, my guess, best guess is it'll, it'll be something that may look like what you've seen over that, with drive over there. But, you know, I don't know, to be honest with you.
Okay, fair enough. Anybody else have anything?
This probably a question to the engineer, is there going to be any potential leaching catch basin underneath the parking lot as many people are doing now?
Yeah, so one of the, one of the challenges, Joe, with this particular site is we've got a high groundwater conditions out here, groundwater is estimated about two, two and a half feet below the surface. So, in terms of providing any subsurface stormwater BMPs, I think that's going to be a challenge in order to be able to get the two-foot required minimum separation distance that DEP typically requires from recharge BMPs. So, what, what we're going, what we're hoping here is essentially to have everything runoff towards the, towards the basin down at the lower end of the parking lot. One of the considerations with respect to that, and it will require some, some investigations is, you know, we had thought about, we do this on a lot of our projects, is, you know, is roof water, roof water is, you know, typically pretty clean. So that's, you know, that, that's a good candidate to put into the ground because it doesn't require a significant amount of treatment. But again, on, on sites like this, it, it, it can be a challenge just with the high groundwater conditions.
Anybody else have anything? If not, okay, well, good luck, we'll be waiting to hear back from you.
Thank you all, good to see you, we'll see you, see you when we see you.
Stay healthy.
Yeah, you all too well.
Thank you so much for your time, guys.
Mr. Dwyer, next.
We next have Mr. Grimaldi, Popeyes, I believe.
Okay.
Hello, all. Just give me two minutes, I was trying to get off the road on that, so give me two seconds. What we are, while I'm pulling over, what we are coming back to you today is we have our building approved and we are, you know, as most of you guys noticed from this morning, we're in for permit and we just got to dot a few i's and cross a few t's and we'll hopefully be under construction shortly.
Just a way of background, I'm the only member of the development team from the planning board.
Oh, okay.
So, if you want to bring everyone else up to speed on where you are in the process.
Okay, so, from the building standpoint, and I apologize because I'm doing this remotely, I'm doing this all from my iPhone, so I apologize for technical difficulties. We are, we're in from, you know, the board graciously granted us an approval on the building, so we could file. Everything's been filed for a while, we have a couple of details to work out with the plumbing official right now, just as far as the amount of fixture units going through the grease trap. But I'm sure Dennis Phil will be able to work, will be able to work it out with Mr. Phil. And the only other thing is really just a meeting with the fire department and our contractor, once we have a contractor signed on. And we'll get that project underway, which will be a good fall project for somebody as it gets cold because there's, you know, it's an internal job mainly. But we finally got the, the franchisees approved sign vendor to come back with the halo lit signage that we submitted into the town, and now, again, this is where we're going to have some trickiness here. I'm going to try to share.
Well, if, if it's easier, I, I can share, I have the, I have it up, and I've already distributed it to everyone else as well.
If you could, that would be fantastic, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay, so let's see, there is the Popeyes package. Okay, so we are now on page one.
Okay, so, page one is the sign that will face South Maple. And it is the, you know, one sign, just Popeyes, no Louisiana Kitchen, that will be facing South Maple. And it is halo lit with LEDs that will be out from back and behind. And the square footage is the thirty-two-point-two-five square feet.
Okay, so page one is a side view, so I'm going to go on to page two.
No, no, this is the front and side.
Oh, that is the front, okay.
So, the front and side, so it's the, what you're going to be seeing in the front, and then, so those letters are opaque. And the lighting is going to bleed out from the perimeter of each of those sign letters.
That looks fine.
I'm, if I'm looking at the drawing right, I don't see any standoffs, it looks flush mounted to the wall, so I don't see how it can be halo lit. There's no gap between, behind it.
You know, as I'm looking at it, I'm, I'm there with you, because the returns look full, look full back. Now, just hang on one second here. You know what, I, I'm telling you this, well, let me say it from the square footage standpoint, this is correct. From the halo correction, this is, I didn't send you the correct one. So, let me first see if I could get it on, let me ask you this, if we should bother continuing or not. This will be the, the correct square footage with the halo lit, it'll have the gap and it'll have the halo lit edge. If we could speak about the square footage, and then give me a second, I will try to see if I have the corrected one. But, so the front, the front is a total square footage of thirty-two-point-two-five square feet.
That's fine.
The only other signage we have on the building are the two medallions on the both sides of the face of the building. And they are seven-point-oh-seven square feet. So generally speaking, we have a total square footage for the entire building of forty-seven square feet. And I believe, if I remember correctly, from the last, from the last planning board meeting, the, we were, we had a limit of sixty-four?
That is correct.
So, that said, and let me just make sure I'm trying to get, and I apologize, I sent you this again this afternoon while I was, again, in the, on the road. And I did get a set of incorrect ones that did not have it, and of course, that's the one I sent you because I was in a rush. But they, hundred, and I'll testify to that matter, they will a hundred percent be the halo lit, which basically, all that happens is that, that side return is not a full return. And there is another aluminum structure that holds the letters off. And the full return doesn't go all the way back, it's approximately about three-quarters of an inch of a holdoff with a little reflective piece on the edge of that, so that when the halo light comes in, it makes the nice surround. So they will be a halo lit and the overall square footage will be less than forty-seven feet, forty-seven square feet.
But we were saying, maybe I lost you, what was thirty-two feet?
Thirty-two feet is the sign that faces South Maple, thirty-two-point-two-five.
And then you got fifteen square feet on the other one?
Well, seven-point-oh-seven square feet on each side, so a total of fourteen-point-four, fourteen-point-one-four square feet on both sides. So, forty, forty-six and change, forty-seven.
Was there some directional signs, like for the drive-ins too, included in that package?
This is just purely the building signage, and there is, as, as you guys may or may not remember, there is actually a pylon sign that at the moment, he's not even going to consider because right now, their view is, look where it's sitting, I don't know if we need it. Because we're facing, you know, we're dead facing South Maple. And so when you come up from that side, as long as we have the medallions on there, you're gonna, you're gonna see the building. So, the, right now, there is the ingress and egress to the back service road there, and there is a pylon sign there at the moment. At the moment, he's gonna, they're gonna come in, our understanding is, if we, even if we try to reactivate that pylon, it's going to have to go through this, a standard procedure as if it was a new pylon, correct?
Yes.
So, he's like, you know what, we're not saving anything right now. And basically, he's like, we're not, sorry, we're not losing anything right now, so let's go in and see if we could save a couple of dollars. I don't think we're going to need the, the pylon sign to be seen. So, they're not looking to activate the pylon sign. And basically, I believe the, we're not changing the direction of the flow of the drive-through as it is right now. You'll, you'll obviously have the arrows painted on the, on the ground. But I, I don't believe there's any planned illuminated signage, directional signage internally onto the site.
Great, are, are the medallion signs halo lit or just plain?
No, they, they will also be halo lit also.
Okay.
Let me get that up again.
And remember, our, our building is basically at the top white.
Okay. A little twitchy here, sorry.
No, no, believe me, again, I, I'm sorry for not, for being so unprofessional in the fashion that I'm acting right now, but.
So let me just scroll, scroll through it, just so we can be sure we've seen everything.
So, this is.
Page two.
This is the front face and the side profile of it, and the only difference is that three-inch dimension that you have there. And when I get you the corrected ones, and obviously, if I don't find it now, I'll have it over to you tomorrow. The three-inch dimension that you have, you see there for the full return, that three-inch dimension will be lessened so that, I believe it's a three-quarters of an inch holdoff, and then internally, there's a structure that has a little reflective piece and a little aluminum piece, obviously, to hold the return back, so that the light bleeds out from around the signage.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to page three, those are the medallions you're talking about.
Those are a hundred percent the medallions and the same thing, so that three-inch return, then in turn, gets, not, the, the edge of that gets cut out and we have a halo around that.
Okay, so let me now go to page four.
Which now that places the sign that was, the first sign that you saw, it places it in the location on the building, on the front face facing South Maple.
Okay. I was going to ask you, I was going to ask you, what is considered the front face, so what is the one facing South Maple?
That, this, this is what I'm considering, the front face, the face that faces South Maple.
That's fine.
So, there's been some minor confusion with the address on this because it is part of the same larger parcel that includes LL Bean, the one-oh-nine or whatever grill, the optical shop that's no longer there, the AT&amp;T, that whole corner with frontage on Russell and South Maple is one parcel, and it had been carrying a Russell Street, street address. So I guess this has been now changed on the E911 books to, for a South Maple Street address.
After our planning board last time, I believe, and I apologize if I'm incorrect, but I believe DeeDee had concurred with the nine-one-one control system and let them tell her what we should be, and in turn, that's where we became three South Maple Street Road.
Okay, so let me just pop out long to page five, which is showing where the medallions are going to go.
Yep, and that, so now, when you're coming, you know, if you were on Russell and made a right down South Maple, you would come down and you would see our right-side elevation, and that would be the medallion. And in turn, that's why the franchisee at the moment is saying, I got my medallion and I got my sign in the front, why do I even need my, my pylon? And if I'm, gonna have to approach it as if it's a new pylon to begin with, so let's see what we have to do, and maybe we don't do it. If we feel we need it, we'll go file it later and spend the money.
Okay, now I'm going to go on to page six, which are just some more detail.
The, now, if you go back to, actually, from this, now go back to the last page though. So, that is, see, at the drive-through window, just so that we have coverage, so that when you're reaching out to get your order, you're not getting soaked with snow or rain.
That's the canopy, okay.
That would be the canopy, that now, if you continue to the next page, that is the canopy, which it's, it's basically a flat stock aluminum canopy with two, I believe they're eight-by-eight LED downlights that just, you know, illuminate, they're, they don't have a large spread or throw, just illuminate where you're at, so you could see your, your proceed, your change of, your order. And I believe if you go to the next page, and that would just be the canopy over the windows at the front.
And that has downlights as well?
Yes. And that basically just, we're getting a little throw of light to wash off on the sidewalks.
Yeah, and that's only like eight or nine feet above grade, I think.
Uh, yes, absolutely, yep.
So that's not going to spread?
No, you're looking at nine-four.
Okay.
So that the cars don't, the trucks don't run into us.
Okay, and then page eight. Seems to be the same.
Did, did you even change?
Uh, yeah, I did, I went from page seven to page eight.
Yeah, so then, that's, yeah, just the two different window elevations, yeah.
Page, page nine should be the shutters, yeah.
Yes, yep. And those are just flat attached to the building. And you could go back to, I think it was page five or six, that show them the, where they are onto the building. Now, the good thing about, yeah, there you go. The good thing about all this, it's all pre-finished, all pre-done. So, it's not a maintenance issue, this stuff lasts pretty much forever, so.
Okay, so, do you think, we're, we're going to be here for a little while longer, so do you think you will be able to find the, the current plans?
Yes, actually, if you want to move on, and I'll just dig into my email and then send them off to you.
Okay.
Okay. If there's anything else, do you need from me?
Nope, get, get that, get the email to Mr. Dwyer and we'll prove it tonight.
Okay, let me, I'm going to put myself back on mute.
Okay.
Thank you. And Mr. Dwyer, I'm going to send that to the planning app, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have that running in the background.
Okay. You got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kim Comio.
Oh, hang on a sec, DeeDee, did you have something? Do you have questions?
Well, yeah, just on the address, we did look it up, and I know the bank was, I believe, five South Maple, even though the, you know, back of it, just like Orange Theory, and that they're all to the, they're not facing the road, but they are South Maple addresses too. And because it does face South Maple, I believe, we double-checked in it, and I believe at one time, it still had a South Maple address. And so we made sure with fire and police that it was on South Maple. So that's what they're going with, with the address for now.
Okay, thank you.
And then, DeeDee is five South Maple?
Uh, yes, I, I believe.
I think we're three.
Yeah, there are three.
Yes, we're three.
Yeah, I just have to double-check in here.
And there were three.
There you go.
Yes, yeah, there, yeah, there are three, I believe Orange Theory is seven, and the bank was five.
That's fine, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Comio. Welcome, oh, before we get into it, just to cover the technicality, Mr., like, as everybody was sent an email, Mr. Michael said is going to be, has verbally requested an extension, he'll be getting me the actual paper copy shortly. But he's requested an extension to twelve-seven for his accessory apartment.
I'll make a motion to extend to twelve-seven.
With condolences to the loss of his father.
Your motion, Mr. Mike? Any other discussion? All in favor, aye. Any opposed, motion passes unanimously, okay, sorry, Kim. Before I forget, that's why I just wanted to do that.
Um, so, good evening, board, so, since the last meeting, which was, what, two weeks ago, we talked about trying to quantify or trying to create a, a ballpark number for the calculation of a purchase price based on a qualified market sale, and so, as I sent the board last night, let me share my screen. This document, which is the one we've been working on for the past couple of months. I know that we had discussed arms-length sale, and so I tried to find, you know, that seems to be an actual legal term that I've noticed. And Bill, I don't know if you've come across a different term for that, but I also don't know if it's appropriate because it makes this so much. I also don't know if it's appropriate because it makes this so much longer. Um, what I proposed here with regards to using that language. Putting the definition of what an arms length sale is. And then. You know, using, utilizing the rest of that particular clause. So, I think we can still, you know, dwell on that with regards to, um. You know, how you want that to read, just so that. If the board is going to be looking at. Those, those, um, the, the thing that, that Bill sent this morning. Which were the sales prices from the assessor's office, um, that you can determine those based on. Um, you know, what's presented. And based on what's in this particular regulation.
Ken?
Yeah.
Just in case we have any public viewing this tonight or in the future.
Sure.
Correct me if I'm wrong, uh, when we discuss arms length, that is just to. Take out of the equation any of those inner family transfers for a dollar. Which would skew the whole average, right?
Yeah, that was my understanding too, and you know, in the research of what. Just searching what arms length sale is, because I'm, I'm not, you know, I'm not familiar with some of those terms, um. That's what it suggested. And the, the definition was one that I defined here. Um, in blue that I'm um, highlighting.
What, what does that mean, Ken? I don't. Where the buyers and sellers independently act. Without one party influencing the other.
My understanding was that. The influence could be suggested that it's a family or, you know, within. A certain, um. Yeah, I, I mean, I don't know necessarily, and that's probably not the best.
Well, what if, what if the family members got three independent appraisals? Is that not arms length?
Well, bit, bit, without getting into the questions yet, Mike. What does the highlighted and blue mean? Can you explain that, Mr. Dwyer?
Well, so it's one of those terms that, um. That uh, it almost doesn't get defined anywhere because it's so broadly understood.
Okay, could you, could you?
For example.
Broadly mean?
I have here the uniform uh, probate code. One of the powers of a personal representative. Sell, lease, or encumber to an arms length third party, any real estate of the estate. So I checked the definitions of arms length and they don't bother to define it. So basically, arms length implies or arms length means a um. A situation, you know, as Ken has tried to say here, where neither party has any advantage over the other. It is um, a willing buyer and a willing seller.
I can read off of Google. It says in, in real estate, an arms length transaction refers to situations in which there is a transfer of property and the buyer and seller act. Independently of one another. This kind of transaction ensures that both parties act in their self-interest to get the best deal. And that neither party exerts pressure over the other.
Okay, that, that, that's, I, I wasn't sure what it meant by act independently.
Yeah.
I mean, I would think. With, with, without one influencing the other, I mean, I, okay, so if it's, as long as if the relative is a different story, I can see that one then.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you.
So, yeah, we can still dwell on the term arms length sale. I know that. In the initial version that I shared with you, and that's why it's so highlighted and red. Qualified wasn't quite defined. However, I think maybe that could be further defined within this particular clause. If that's something you wanna do rather than. Add this arms length sale, which can add and muddy. Maybe not necessarily muddy, but will add just to the, the language of this particular. Um, clause, but um, I think we can still figure that one out. Um, or if, you know, you take what I've suggested here. Um, just replacing. Literally this, this first sentence. Um, with this language.
Yeah, I, I don't think you even need to define arms length.
Okay.
As long as we understand what it is, we're the ones who are um. Applying it. So, and that's just in how we get to. And, and this is something I did discuss with Dan Zadonic when I asked him to put together that spreadsheet that. We want to uh. Sorry, sorry, take out the highs and the lows. We wanna take out the family deals and we wanna take out the McMansions, so. I don't know exactly what he picked as his criteria. I'd have to talk with him about it, but he said he took out the. The really high priced ones, the McMansions that uh. I say uh. Ron Berkum is building. There's nothing. Nothing on this, this sort of tops out in the high fives. And um, I know that property values, properties are selling in the sevens uh. In uh. In some subdivisions, so uh.
That for a three bedroom or?
Well, he does have a category for bedrooms. Uh, I'm gonna say the ones that are selling for the sevens are probably. Uh, five bedroom with um, the flexibility to make two of the bedrooms into offices or. Home gyms if you want. But um. What, what we got from. The assessors, basically the uh. The, the middle of the road.
Yeah, I, I think too, what, you know, cause um. What that will allow you to do is put the. Require then that the assessor make those um. Basically prepare something similar. Every year, because this regulation will need to be amended in some form. Every year due to the changes in the. Um, HUD requirements as we're basing some of these numbers on. So if you were to utilize, um. Let's say these mean and median numbers. Um, and then figure out which one, when you wanna use and require, put all of the. Basically for that first, for, for this first clause. That the assessor's data will be the one to determine that number and that will be universal. Um, and you use that for every. You know, payment in lieu of when you're utilizing this particular calculation. In a given year. Um, so, you know, I think it's, it's helpful that the assessor can. Provide that document to the board. Um, based on. What we're trying to qualify here. So that there's no further. Collection uh, or data analysis that the board needs to do. It literally can just, you know, quantify based on the numbers that are provided in the regulation from HUD. As well as a regulation from the, 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 the number from the assessor's office.
Yeah, what's, what's our catchment area for? Is it uh, Greater Springfield? Is it just uh?
It's the Springfield MSA, so yes, it's Greater Springfield. So all of Hampden and Hampshire County are in this Springfield MSA.
So how, so that would put us in a higher category. Compared to, let's say Springfield, uh, uh, one housing unit.
What do you mean a higher category?
Well, the fact that our prices are gonna be more expensive per housing, per houses.
Yeah, I mean that, that it. The number, the, the number two B would be the same in Springfield that it is in Hadley. The number two A. Is based on your town's assess, um. Your town's most recent sales. Um, so yeah, you're probably right in that Springfield will be very different than Hadley's. But the two B will be based on a number that's universal for every community in Hampden and Hampshire County because they all rely on that.
About you. You, you have it, you have it so noted. Thank you.
And so, in addition to what we talked about at the last meeting, we were talking about. This um, ability to be. Flexible, and so requiring the applicant. Um, and this comes from the Shrewsbury. Uh, document that I shared with you at the last, uh, maybe one or two meetings ago. But basically. It suggests that the board is providing this particular table, which will, which I'll scroll down to. Um, and that the board will update thi- this annually. Um, based on the HUD's annual numbers. And then, so if there is evidence to the contrary, basically. If the applicant determines that any of the purchase prices should be reduced. Then I think that gives them the. Leeway of presenting to the board an appropriate amount instead of. The one that's calculated based on this particular regulation.
Ken, so I, just uh. I kinda like the Shrewsbury attitude, you know, when you think of communities, uh, we're kind of a. Uh, a suburb of uh, you know, Greater Springfield area. And Shrewsbury certainly is a, kind of like a suburb of Worcester, although it's. Just across the lake, but nevertheless, uh. It's, it's probably a good example as opposed to the previous ones that you were talking uh, down the Cape. So, that's just my two cents.
Yeah, I mean, the, the thing that's gonna be, you know, when, when.
Yeah.
Because, because of these inclusionary. This is going to be included in your subsidized housing inventory. There will need to be an approval, as we mentioned, over time. By DHCD to approve these units, right? I, I think as you recall, Joe, you were talking about. How um, wages for the construction of these um. Residents uh, buildings are going to be, um, you know. Documented and monitored, so there is going to be that review process. And so, I think that. Um, they will have something to say, um, with regards to, you know, the way that it's initially presented to the state. Um, however, I do think, yeah.
That's a, that's a good point you bring up because I was thinking that's a. Protect, uh, let's say a developer is gonna build a unit offsite. And he's gonna probably make a house that's pretty worn down, up to code and uh. He will do it with the private wages, but you're. Telling us now that when he does something like that and it goes into the affordable. Uh, forty, forty B. It's gonna have to be prevailing wages.
No, no, not at all.
Well, yeah, not, yeah, not, not in all aspects, but. Um, but the, I think this provides a flexibility that you're asking for. I don't know if it's too wordy, if you think that it can be simplified in any way. Um, this suggests that. You know, it should satisfy the affordability requirements if they do come up with a different number. Um, but it will be up to the planning board or the, whoever is going to be responsible for determining. You know, what goes into the fund. You know, and making sure that that's amenable to the, the, the spirit of the, the regulation.
So I had one question. Let me look at my copy of this. Which I have up in the background. Okay, I don't, I don't think this is too wordy because I think we wanna get this right. Because it's not gonna come up very often.
Right.
Um, and we, we only have one subdivision that has even triggered this so far. Uh, so, that's like one in three years. Admittedly, it was a, a downtime and there is. Other inventory out there. But what I would like to say is in number four. That, um. Maybe the funds, uh, funds contributed to the town of Hadley in accordance with these guidelines shall be, just shall be. Administered by the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And then we don't have to say, um, anything about any interest earned, uh, and. Uh, expended only with the approval of the select board. That's already embedded in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I think we just wanna make sure that it goes to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. I've seen direct language in some of the other samples we've looked at about.
I'll take a look. So that, that basically all of the, the, um. That all of the. Funds that are accrued by the inclusionary payment in lieu of will go straight to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, in the other examples, okay, well, we'll see if. So you, you, I guess your. Um, comment was with regard to that particular line about interest.
That was regarding number four. If it just goes to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, the. Crediting interest earned to the fund and the. How it can be expended is already embedded in the Affordable Housing Trust Fund language. So, as long as we get it there, the rest of it doesn't matter.
Okay, is that the majority of the select board, is that appropriate?
I, I think if we just say it goes to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, period, we don't have to put anything else in.
Yeah.
Oh, so clearing this all up.
Yeah.
I mean, simplest, the simpler, the better. Um, that just acknowledges that. The funds that are, are collected due to this will go straight to that Affordable Housing Trust Fund. So, the, the task at the last meeting was to determine, you know, what a maximum price could be. Um, and I'll just say that it was a challenge because I was trying to figure out. Um, how, through the examples that I was able to find, how they arrived at those. Um, and so I'm going to just open this particular. This particular link. Which um, gave me, or tha- that I worked off based on. Um, get, arriving at these numbers. Um, based on utilizing the various, um. Examples that they provided here.
There is jargon in there that, is there a footnote that? That defines AMI and uh.
So to add the, the jargon?
Yeah.
I think we, do we talk about, I think we talk about AMI up here.
Is it?
Yeah, so.
Area media income, so if we have the parentheses AMI there, that'd be good.
Um.
Thank you.
So. With regards to this. This number comes from the Springfield, um, MSA for twenty twenty one. So this is eighty percent of the area median income is sixty seven thousand three hundred for a family of four. And so, we are targeting towards. Uh, area median income of seventy percent based on, you know, some of these examples that I was able to find. Um, here. So, if you were to, so from there. How I came to, I think this number. Was fifty seven, one ninety. Um, you know, and you, you. Basically whittle that down to what a, a monthly housing cost would be. Where housing is thirty percent of, uh. And a monthly income. So, which quantified to about one thousand four hundred thirty dollars based on a family of four spending thirty percent of monthly income towards housing costs, including mortgage. And so, um, you know, no, noting that. I kind of worked backwards from where. This example here suggested, you know, these particular costs for. Taxes, insurance, any sort of HOA or condo fee. Um, which I quantified with three fifty because I found that on another source. Which somewhat, you know, makes sense based on some of these numbers. Um, and came up with a principal and interest. And this is where it, it's a little weird because I can't. I can't figure out. What they multiplied by what. However, they were all multiplied by the same number. And so, I divided. This mortgage amount by the principal. And came up with one sixty two point four one and that. And came up with one sixty two point four one, and that was the same for all three of these, so this is very different. And so. That arrived at. This particular number. Or was it the maximum price, one of those, um. And I just applied that number to come up with. One of the, I think it's this number that I I I came up with. Um, and then figured out the down payment to to figure out the the estimated mortgage, so. What I'm saying is that it's based on this example, but I worked backward. Um, and I don't know not necessarily how to um, quantify if. If if that's in fact necessary based on this example and based on this resource. Um, so I, you know, I asked the board to, you know, if this makes sense. But I think it does based on the way some of these numbers are presenting themselves. And the suggestion would be that this is what your two B number is. And then you look at your two A number. When we, when you look at, you know, clause two A and two B over here to qua- to these, these numbers. And then come up with the difference between this and the two A. Uh, which will put you in the range of hmm, almost. Like, two fifty? No, two ten? Um, anyway, uh. So that, that, that was um, the calculation of this particular. Section, that was the, the task, um, I think as I I mentioned to Bill when he was asking. Um, about bringing this forward to this particular meeting, I haven't yet. Talked to anyone from Shrewsbury, that was the, like, the, the. The team that I really wanted to get some information from with regards to this particular exercise, but no one has returned my calls. And um. But this is what, you know, what we've arrived at based on the resources that are out there.
So, so you're saying, if if I'm interpreting this correctly, in our statistical area. Someone who would otherwise qualify for affordable housing. Can. Pay no more that can can afford to pay no more than a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for a home.
That's the suggestion, yeah.
Okay, and.
Based on seventy percent of the area median.
Okay. So, and that may be a realistic price in. Central Hampden County or maybe a hill town, but um, then we look at what the assessors gave us. And um. That's a pretty big spread.
Two to upper fives, yeah.
Well, even if you just do the uh, the mean or the median, which functionally are. I know there's a distinction, but the numbers are close enough.
You're around four hundred.
So if it's, if you can afford one eighty nine and we're getting. Three eighty nine and some change. It's like we're looking at a payment in lieu of something in the order of two hundred thousand dollars, is that?
They, yeah, I think that's based on the, this particular calculation, I think if you recall from the Shrewsbury example. That is where they arrived at, it was like between one eighty five and two. Um, for a single family home. So. Yeah.
So that does make. So what was, what was the number, I I'm just trying to get in the minute, so what was the number, one eighty nine was the maximum affordable?
Eighty five.
Five. Plus or minus, and. Had the. Average is three. Three ninety nine, call it. Oh, through, the, the act, the mean is three ninety nine.
Realizing that two thousand twenty, the prices are high, but even go to two thousand and nineteen, the mean is two, three sixty eight, you're still talking. You know, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars, you're right, Bill.
And this is to purchase a house when, you know, so affordable purchases.
Well, when we, when we talk about having.
I wasn't here last week, or two weeks ago. But. I thought we kind of came to the conclusion that even though we're, we're not talking about buying a house, we're talking about affordable rents.
But I thought we were talking rentals.
Yeah, so I don't even know why we're doing all this stuff. We're talking about affordable rents, not buying a house. Well, I mean, I, you're on the, on the, on the screen before, you had down payment of eight thousand dollars, where in hell they gonna come up with eight thousand dollars?
Well, like, but I think if we're talking to a, if we're talking to a developer of a subdivision.
Exactly right.
Who is building houses or selling building lots in there.
Right now?
As Barry did, yeah.
Yeah, uh, I think we have to talk about sale prices, um.
Yes. What happened to, I guess, you know, I probably shouldn't be part of this discussion because you guys clearly went. On a different tangent than I thought we were on at the last meeting I came to. Was making a contribution per lot and not worrying about all these crazy numbers that.
But but the, but the con- the contribution per lot has to be based on something.
Exactly, yeah.
And it's gonna be based on a sales price of an affordable house.
Well, what was, I just noticed a number here earlier, in in no case less than sixty thousand dollars, where did that number come from?
That's a minimum payment.
Yeah, but where'd it come from?
That was just the number we pulled out of the, pulled out of the air.
Thank you.
Before all of this research, which shows it's actually quite a bit more.
But we're talking about if you've got a development of seven. Lots, then there'll be a contrib- contribution per lot, so it could be. Seven times twenty or or seven times thirty.
Yep. Right.
So, a lot simpler, this is.
Well, it, it.
This is, what, what is that? This is, uh.
I understand, I understand what you're saying, Mike, and I don't disagree with you, I.
Yeah, okay.
We wanted to figure out what this worked out to, when we were just talking about, um. Formulas on paper without any data. We didn't know where we were going, now we know where we're going, and. You know, frankly, I don't think we'll get a, a single payment in lieu at, it, it's. I can't imagine that it's not going to be more cost effective for a developer to. Renovate a unit somewhere else in town, bearing in mind that it could be a studio apartment. Compared to buying out under this formula, but now.
But but the assumption is they still have to buy that. Rehab unit. And how are they gonna? Come up with eight thousand dollars for the down payment to get a mortgage, which they probably won't qualify for.
Well.
Real world.
No, that's sort of, that's, that's. Not, not where we're going with this, though.
Okay, okay.
The developer uh, has the op, the developer has always had two options. Build an affordable. Unit in the development.
Yeah.
Or. Create an affordable unit elsewhere in town. Or make payment in lieu. So, um, again, bearing in mind, only one developer is even. Implicated in this at this point.
Yeah. We certainly wanna try to include, include more developers, because as we talked the last time I was here. The magic number we got is eight. And.
What magic, Mike, what magic number is eight?
If you build eight units, you have to have an affordable unit.
No, six.
Six, I'm sorry, six, okay.
Yeah.
So, six, six or more triggers affordability.
Well, my question was, why doesn't two or more, if the, if the cost of the houses are. Nine hundred thousand dollars each, why isn't it two or more?
Well, tha- that's something Bill, Bill also mentioned that what we should do is go all the way down, that if it's six or more. This is the option, but if it's one to five, there's gonna be a minimum contribution for lot, we'll have to amend the zone by law. Because I agree, we need to make everybody pay something, otherwise.
We don't, we don't want these McMansions to escape putting money into the Affordable Housing Trust.
Right, absolutely correct.
I think we mentioned that, yeah.
Yeah, tha- that'll be something we'll be probably putting on the next uh, town meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, this is just our regulation for the payment in lieu part. Um, but I, I, I think you're right, and you mentioned that the last time you were here, that I think you're quite right, that. Once you start doing subdivisions, now maybe we can leave. The A and R lots out of it, but once you start doing subdivisions, um. Yeah, it's probably fairer to capture something per lot.
Yeah, we, so Mike, this is, this is the conversation that we had when I shared those documents from the Cape. Um, those two communities on the Cape, um, Provincetown and Ipswich. Um, required a payment into the Housing Trust Fund um, for subdivision development, not saying that. It was probably very difficult to build subdivisions on the Cape, but. There was a minimum cost to the developer for building any housing.
Yeah.
So that, and and the board at the last meeting suggested that would be something that we talked about at a future.
Well. I think that the cost of building a unit. And what it's gonna cost to a lower income person should almost have no bearing at all to what's required to be put into the trust fund. Because. We should just put it, you know, we, we, we pulled that, you pu- pulled the sixty out of the air, we pulled the six out of the air. We just went back and said, per lot, you've gotta put so much in, two to five lots, put so much per lot. And we don't have to go through all these calculations that on a yearly basis that are just gonna be. Send somebody to the.
Well, I don't, I don't, Mike, I mean, I, I, I could be corrected, I don't think the sixty thousand was meant to be set. No, and I think it was more of a placeholder while we did this, while we ran some.
Yeah, yeah.
Calculations to find out what would be a reasonable.
Yeah. I'm just not sure that, trying to figure out what the, the cost of affordable housing is and what you can afford. Is necessarily correlated to what we want people to put into the trust fund if. We wanna make it simple and allow the trust fund to grow, and clearly. Given the current state of the bylaw. Many. Large developments. Because they didn't meet the sixth threshold or whatever the, the legal structure of the development was, have escaped putting money into the trust fund. And that has to be remedied.
Well, and that's, that's true, and that, but that, that is a rewrite of the inclusionary zoning bylaw itself.
Okay, that's fine.
And I still think that there. I, I still like to leave, well. Yeah, maybe in a sense, the payment, and if we had a, a payment per lot, maybe we didn't need the payment in lieu, but um. It's um.
Because this, the affordable housing number, how much you can afford to pay is a moving number, it's. It's constantly fluctuating. And uh. But clearly. We wanna make this simple, and.
Well, the, the, the way to make it simple, Mike, I think is the fact that we almost ought to, uh. Ignore the fact that we are trying to do some affordable housing and let our threshold go below ten percent. And have some developer put in twenty units that will satisfy the town's ten percent. For another fifteen, twenty years, because when you look at it now, you say, well, we wanna charge. The uh, somebody, let's say two young school teachers are starting their family, we're penalizing these people. Because they're.
That's the nature of the beast, unfortunately, you're, this is causing the general. Cost of housing to go up, and there's no way around that.
Well, if, if there is a way around it by almost ignoring it and say, let's uh. Let's wait for it to go below ten percent.
True.
Somebody will put some houses up somewhere and uh, will have to live with it.
It, it would be one thing if they put up. A few houses, a few apartments, they're not gonna put a hose, they're gonna put apartments.
There will be apartments, correct.
If they, it'd be one thing if somebody put up a few apartments, but most of these places that are looking at apartments now are looking to put in. Fifty, eighty, a hundred units to make them, you know, co- affordable by scale to construct. So, do you really wanna put an a hundred unit apartment in town that only has?
We, we don't, we don't know, we could, we could qualify, we could limit those if it's still above ten percent.
Not if it falls below ten percent.
Well, is, is there any way that we can go searching for friendly forty B? Say, hey, we, the town wants, you know, I, I, I know we. Doctor Zara keeps pointing out the thirteen percent, and you know. There, there's something attractive to letting it go to ten percent, but, but why don't we, what about going the other way? Get it up to sixteen percent.
That is the idea of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. To entice a developer to come in, or developers, and do a friendly forty B. And we will give you some this much money.
Sure.
Money to do affordable units, so that it qualifies.
Yeah, and.
And, and the benefit of rental property, as I understand it, under the current regulations, is that. You only have to have twenty five or thirty percent affordable. A hundred percent of the apartments in the development qualify for the inventory. If only as many as twenty five percent are affordable.
Well, i- if we were proactive in this, then.
And.
We, we couldn't be forced to, he could, uh, uh, adverse forty B couldn't come in. And put it wherever they wanted to, we could, we could have some control over it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Which I think is important, so I, I, I don't know how to go about suggesting that we want, we're, we're welcome, welcoming. Friendly forty B offers in town, clearly, you know, clearly, public transportation is key to this. I mean, we, Route nine can't look any more worse than it's gonna look.
To do a friendly forty B, Mike, a lot of towns or cities. Have an enticement for them, you know, exempt from taxes, exempt from this, not doing this. We, we don't wanna make them exempt from taxes, what we're trying to do is use the Affordable Housing Trust Fund as our enticement. And we need to get that built up so that we can have a decent enticement for somebody.
Yeah, well, I think the first thing you're gonna do is get rid of the number six.
Well.
And you know, clearly, it's gonna take, I really wish. I, I'll tell you what, I wish we could start meeting publicly again, to look at each other across the table, cuz this is complicated stuff.
Number six right now is an arbitrary number, we can make that something different, I don't wanna get rid of number six, I wanna make it something that. Again, if it's zero to five units, we want them to put something into the fund.
Yeah.
So we can, we can reword number six to make it such that if it's zero to five, it'll be so much per lot. Or so much per you, per lot, yes.
Maybe it's twenty thousand per lot or something, and, and that, that takes it up to a hundred thousand for five lots.
You know, so that, you know, each lot should some, some, should put something, and I don't know what the number is, you know, ten thousand a lot. That would be fifty thousand, but right now it's based on per unit, it's be based on the six or more units. So we're talking two different things here.
Yeah.
And that's not unlike what Barry Roberts is doing with a. He's taking a slice off of each condo. he's taking a slice off of each condo he sells.
Sure.
And can, and putting that in. So uh.
Or let's put it this way, charging more for each condo he sells.
Right.
So to help, to help Mike out here, maybe Ken, maybe just stop sharing, so we go to fuller bigger pictures.
So, so you get my, you get my argument, you know, I think.
No, I, I do, I, I think they're, they're, they're all I'm trying to do is if we are going to talk about creating a payment in lieu formula, the other issues are valid, but they go back to the underlying Inclusionary Zoning Bylaw. Um, I think we're just talking about a payment, the payment in loose slice of that. I think it's worth working out, but I thank you for the work you put in, Ken, working up the numbers for uh for that, for that part, uh, because it really is an eye opener, you know, I, I.
Sure was.
Payment in lieu at that point, and, and that's why I think it was worth the exercise. Because otherwise, we're just going around in circles with what ifs. Now we have a hard, hard number and uh, and it doesn't look pretty.
And I, I personally think we want the payment in lieu for six or more units to be reasonably high as we can talk about this one, we want them, we want to encourage them to build something affordable or convert into something affordable in town.
See, it's got to be tied to what the cost of development is, not necessarily six or more units, but the cost of those units.
I think we're saying one or the other, up to six, or no, is it one to five, you pay per unit, then you go to six, and then you have a, in lieu of different calculation, which is.
I want to catch, I want to catch the, the, the McMansions, as it's been put.
Right.
Because they slipped, they slipped through the crack, and clearly those are the ones that could afford a decent contribution to the trust.
And our, and we're kind of, you know, damned if we do, damned if we don't, because if we say we want to keep that per per lot cost low so that you can build two three hundred thousand dollar houses and not exorbitantly raise them, then you're letting the McMansions, if they build to two eight hundreds off, you're letting them off cheap, so it's, yeah.
I think, I think the days of Hadley building three or four hundred thousand dollar homes is over.
Well, I'm, I'm just tossing out examples.
Yeah, I know, but I just, you, you get my gist, it's just, it's.
And then there's the obvious question, what we were talking about earlier is, you know, I think someone said, we want to, we want to incentivize people to, to build. Well, if we do that, then who's response, I guess the select board and their budget, you know, who's then setting money aside for the ultimate infrastructure improvements, because the more housing that's advised, you know, our septic, I mean, our, our sanitary isn't going to hold up, our school isn't going to hold up, you know.
Well, that's another thing Joe Zgrana's pointed out, if you do a development, it has to be on town sewer. But I, I wish there were some way we could incentivize a friendly forty B. Uh, and, and rather than wait for something to happen, try to make something happen. That might be require a change in our zoning by law, but would, at least would be in front of the curve.
No, it actually would not require, uh, a friendly forty B would not require a change in the zoning by law because by its nature, it allows the, the developer to override zoning.
Okay.
If they are eligible.
Even a friendly one, they can override zoning?
Yeah, yeah, so the friendly one, we're, we're just, and, and I know that Joe and Jim had experience with a friendly one that didn't prove to be anything but, um, but I, I think we have all learned from their experience, so for example, you could negotiate that, yes, we will, we will welcome a friendly forty B if one hundred percent of the units are permanently affordable.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't think when this all started, twenty and thirty more years ago, affordable for thirty years seemed like uh, seemed like a long time. But if we could make it permanently affordable and it would not drop off the rolls, and it every unit was permanently affordable, not twenty-five percent, um, if someone were willing to agree to that, uh, yeah, I think we could play, let's make a deal.
You know, one of the amazing things about zoning i- in the repercussions that are ten, twelve, fifteen years down the line is Hatfield, for example, when Hatfield went from a hundred and twenty-five foot frontage to two hundred foot frontage, the lots became more expensive in Hatfield, therefore, none of the developers were building uh lots in Hatfield. Fast forward, about ten, nine years ago, Hatfield, or maybe eight years ago, Hatfield only graduated eighteen kids. Yeah, you can't run a railroad with only eighteen kids, certainly not a school system, so uh, yeah, it's that delicate balance, we don't want to have too many kids where you have to build another school, um, yet, you want to add, make it as affordable for the middle class people too, to come into town. So.
We're, we're graduating, what, less than thirty students a year in a school, I've, I've been in the school, the uh, um, that, the, what they call the senior hallway is the hallway you walk down to go to the basketball games.
Yep.
And you notice there's a cable lock on half of the lockers in that hall.
Yes.
Uh, I think the school can, a- a- and this is actually a conversation we should probably try to bring in the uh, uh, representative of the school committee or the school administration, um.
Bring in Dr. Hanny there.
But definitely, the school accommodated a larger population. I want to say not that long ago, but it was fifty years ago.
Well, well, the elementary school that was constructed was constructed to hold four hundred students. There's not that many students in the whole system. K through twelve.
Jim, why don't you share with how many kids were in your class with Mark and Mike, uh, when, when you were in the eighth grade?
Just for information, Bill and I graduated in the same class, it was the largest class to ever go through Hopkins. Mr. Sarzinski graduated with my sister, it was the second largest class to ever go through Hopkins. Our class had eighty-eight graduating students, I think Mike's had sixty-nine or something, Mike?
I think it was more than that, but hell, I don't remember.
Yeah, you were somewhere around sixty-nine or seventy students. And my daughter's class, which graduated, I want to say, let's see, I think two thousand and one was the third widest graduating class to go through school, they had like sixty kids in her class, sixty-one. And since then, it's, and in the, the graduating class after us dropped, dropped from eighty-eight to, I think, forty, Bill, if I'm right.
High, high thirties, low, uh, forty last, last year.
So it was a huge drop off between them.
So how many more cows do we have in town than graduating to, sorry?
It used to be there.
Why don't you make, you can make that count, Mark.
It used to be twenty dairy farms way back when, uh, and that I can remember, now there are four. Maybe five.
I'd say Barstow's Cook, West, Kakaski, I think there's more than that.
So getting back to affordable housing.
Getting back on, on track.
Oh, I had an old girlfriend from Slovenia, was part of Yugoslavia, and they had one bureaucrat per cow.
You were talking about, I'll just throw in one more tidbit, you were talking about how things have changed in fifty years. Fifty years ago, Charlton Heston made a movie about what he thought was going to happen in fifty years, and that was called Soil and Green. They, and it says, in the future, in the year twenty twenty-two, people will be eating soil and green, soil and green is people breeding us like cattle to feed ourselves, anyway. I digress, I digress.
So we've been, we've been bouncing this friendly forty B thing around. And, you know, is it, does it have any legs to it, I mean, or is it just?
Well, I, I think that that definitely is a conversation, and you know, it, it's understood that having, and I think I mentioned that's the last meeting, I was meeting with, um, I have a meeting with the town administrator and um, someone on your affordable, affordable housing committee um, to, to discuss um, a possible affordable, um, a housing production plan. We, we had this conversation maybe a couple of meetings ago, but th- those are the types of recommendations that would come out of it. Um, as well as, you know, presentation of those types of resources to get you there.
Well, you know, you can make all the recommendations you want, but you got to find somebody that's willing to do it.
Right.
You know, we got enough recommendations, we got to find somebody that would, would be willing to put a developer to be willing to do it. I mean.
So I, I don't.
These meetings go, these meetings go on for ten more years.
I don't think it is unreasonable to maybe be looking for someone, if you look at Amherst, it's virtually built out.
Yeah.
Um, what we do have are, and this is something we've been talking about in the Economic Development Working Group, um, you know, the next, the next big thing is going to be a, an adaptive reuse of a, of an existing site. Um, and um, where that will be, I don't know, but there, yeah, there's not a lot of unbroken ground in uh, on sewer for a large apartment complex. But there are underutilized parcels and, you know, malls have a life cycle.
Exactly, Bill, I was thinking that way, and believe it or not, there was something like that proposed uh, by the, a planning committee or a a course at UMass, I saw it at the Hoyuk Mall, and part of Hampshire Mall was divided into apartments. So some student had a little bit, uh, maybe more foresight than we do, I don't know.
Well, look, look at what I mean, right now, that was, a few years ago, and it wasn't that long ago, five, six years, everybody was putting up motels in Hadley Hotels.
Yeah.
Now, two of them are looking to be torn down and something completely different put in their place. So.
Well, Ken, you know, a word, a word, Ken, do not be afraid to rein us in and try to keep this going, because obviously, we'll give you the big stick and you can tell us to because as you can see, we digress when, once, we accomplished a lot tonight, and thank you for coming up with those.
Yeah, I want to go back to Howard Johnson's and get some affordable office units, no, sorry.
Yeah.
That'd be a great place for affordable housing.
So, thank you, Ken. Of course, I mean, I think, I think we need to take and just digest what's to get for us without having them do any more legwork. I guess, I think we've got about as much legwork as we can handle. We just got to decide how we're going to put it together and go forward.
Yeah, I mean, we're being very noble, but certainly, you know, part of my speech is the fact that all the communities around us almost including Amherst, just, Amherst just barely makes the ten percent, and, and Northampton just barely makes the ten percent. Uh, Sunderland only had one percent, but that's why they've got that uh, apartment complex going in, but they have problems with where's the sewer going to go, is it going to be a big septic system, they still haven't ironed that out, so, and South Hadley only has four percent, Hatfield has, no, South Hadley has six percent, Hatfield has four percent. So we don't want to become uh, go beyond while the other communities are not doing their responsibility, so those, that's my editorial comment for today.
Well, so I, I want to say for the record, first of all, we have not reopened the public hearing on Planning Board Regulations. I could, it's continued to tonight, I would like to make a motion to continue the public hearing, which we have not reopened, continue it without reopening to uh, maybe the second November meeting.
Okay.
That would be November sixteenth. I don't think we have anything on for the sixteen.
Not yet, that's correct.
Okay, so I'll make that motion to continue.
Second.
Motion a second, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, so Ken, I wonder if we could just ask you to keep on trying to get in touch with Hrewsbury?
Yeah.
And anyone else you can find and get any sense of what their um, payment in lieu payments look like. Um, I know, I did send one around really early in the process, it was, it was a North Shore town, and I forget which it was, and they were doing uh, beachfront condos, and they had.
Wasn't it Gloucester?
Something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, they had.
Rockport or Gloucester, I think.
Yeah, something up there, they had worked it out that for, there would be a flat assessment for every condo that was sold. And the ones that had beachfront, the, they had ocean views were like, call that twenty-five thousand, and the ones that did not have ocean views were fifteen thousand per unit. Which sounded okay, because again, a unit's a unit. And that was in lieu, in place of requiring that any of those be affordable. I'll try to look through my, my file and see if I can find that one again.
Well, we, we took that online class, the Zoom meeting, and that's where it came up, remember?
Yes, that was the the planning director from that town was talking about their experience, and then I dug the actual bylaw and found it. Um, so that, that kind of goes back to more of Mike's idea about making, getting a, a slice of every developed lot. But I, what I'd really be interested in is any if you could find anyone to talk to who could tell you what what they're actually getting.
You know, getting back to slices of every development, developed lot, I would prefer so we don't penalize the, the middle income person, is getting a slice of every lot and develop, and house, that it has developed over half a million dollars. You know, uh, that would protect the middle class, middle income of town.
You're sounding like a polit- somebody running for political, only tax the rich, we'll only tax the rich.
I'm changing, I'm changing my ways.
So, I, um, a- and then I, I guess we certainly can, can talk about taking a broader view of Inclusionary Zoning and friendly forty Bs at the sixteen, though I think we'll try to just keep, try to protect that, so nothing else gets scheduled for it.
I, you know, I would, we can talk about forty Bs some more, but I want some other people in town, if possible, asking questions, rather than just have this an intellectual discussion. And the only way to get a fo- friendly forty B going is to talk about it and approach somebody to see if they'd be willing to doing it, then they can be part of the discussion.
Yep.
Yeah, because, you know, hell, I'm not a developer.
No, but we have to, we have to prepare the ground that is worth discussing.
Or perhaps a developer could help us prepare the ground a little bit, because, you know, I'm, I'm shooting buckshot.
Mark, you just have to, you just have to plow in, Mark.
He's not to plow in. Um, I have something I would like to ask to add to um, Ken's charge, but that's not my, not my um, role, so I will pose this to to Jim as, as a chairman. Could we, uh, you know, I'd be interested in, while Ken's looking at these other communities and what, what their payment in lieu of, and I'd be interested in what they've spent and how they've spent it, what kind of transactions. And what, what their payment in lieu of, and I'd be interested in what they've spent and how they've spent it, what kind of transactions. You know, cause I, it's hard for us to picture, you know, we're building up this fund, but. Where, how have people successfully expended that, those funds?
I, I think that's a good idea. Pro- of the towns that have an affordable housing trust. Um, some that have spent it and what have they spent it on?
It'd be good to learn from their experience, yeah.
Gloucester was a three, three or four story, basically apartment building.
I mean, there is quite a few towns around it that have.
Housing affordable.
Nobody has spent much, if anything.
In order to make housing affordable, Hadley is gonna have to go the direction of. More concentrated housing. It, it's just, it's not gonna happen. It was single dwellings. It's just not.
We could have our own UMass Southwest, you know, with our towers.
Yeah, we're definitely, we, we know we're. We're not gonna get banged for our buck by churning out one Habitat for Humanity House every other year. That's not gonna do it.
We want a big bang. We want, we wanna make us. You, 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 you guys that have been here thirty years wanna make, forty years wanna make a statement.
So, uh, as to Mark's point. Uh, as to Mark's point, Ken, I think I recall. S- one of the trainings we went to on the various affordable housing, it was maybe Lennox. Or Lee. That, um. Used the affordable housing, their affordable housing trust fund. To steer a, um, a forty B. To a location that they would prefer to have it at. And they used some of their money to. Uh, maybe build an access road or extend the sewer line to that spot. As opposed to the spot where the developer initially wanted to go.
Okay.
So, um.
But the town paid for that or?
So, yeah, I guess the, the town agreed that they would extend the sewer line to. To the, uh, the parcel on the east side of town that they wanted to see built up. But they weren't going to extend it to the parcel on the west side of the town that they didn't wanna see build up. So it was something like that. Uh, I wish I had more detail, but that was. Something I view subsequently in discussion, discussing why an affordable housing trust fund. Can leverage itself. But there's something, something like that.
I wish I had, I wish I had better memory, but about thirty, thirty-five years ago, in the, when I was in the private sector. I was doing a project for E O C D, which, uh, that's what they were called then, the Executive Office of Community Development. And I was doing a big housing project and I think it was in Lee. I, you know, I can't remember if it was forty or eighty units and all this, you know, it never got off the boards. You know, whether the economy or whatever, I was just a. You know, junior architect at that point.
Lee is a little poorer community as opposed to Lennox being more affluent, so.
Um, so I quickly looked at, because I, I, I referred to this, I think, a, a couple of meetings ago. Um, with regards to Shrewsbury, in the absence of being able to contact them, which I will continue to try. Um, but in their housing production plan, they do list. The payment in lieu of units and since two thousand and five, they've accrued. Um, nine hundred thirty-three thousand, nine hundred one dollars. It'll be interesting to see how they've spent that.
Your town was that, Ken?
Shrewsbury.
Shrewsbury, okay.
So that's in their housing production plan. Um, but I think, you know, Mark's points about how and. Um, what types of transactions have come from, you know, the monies in the housing trust fund. Could be, you know, it could provide some context for the possibilities in Hadley. Um, as you build that trust fund. So, that's just for, you know, just for information for you all.
So Mr. Gomaldi has very patiently. Waited through all of this and he did send us the revised plan, so.
You have it?
Let me, let me bring them up.
I am still here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. You bored to death yet?
I, I will tell you this, I did start moving, so, um, I, I, I probably can't look at the drawings right now, but. I will say that, um, I was correct and incorrect. Um, so the three inch piece, when you're looking at the profile of the, uh, sides. The three inch piece, the entire three inch piece slides out, so we have the one inch gap.
You get the one inch, yes, you've got one inch standoffs. That sounds about right.
And, um, and that, that's really the, uh, the difference with, between the two sets of drawings.
Okay, so I'm gonna page through this. We're on page.
Actually, um, there is another difference. And I quite frankly don't know why, but they made the sign facing, uh, maple smaller. So instead of it being, uh, thirty-two square feet, it's twenty-five square, uh, and I, I apologize. If you could look at it, I think it's twenty-five point four square feet.
Maybe, maybe they're making larger medallions. I don't know.
Well.
No, they have great, they have great, such great product that they're, they don't even need a big sign.
Right. Word of mouth is all they need.
That's right.
And, 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 you know, not to be coy about it. You know, once they know, as with anything, once you know where it is, you go. Or if you like it, you go. You don't need to know where the sign is, so.
Exactly.
But, they, so the South Maple is twenty-five and change. And the medallions are still the same, seven point oh seven. So, um, we are now down from the forty-seven. To, I guess, thirty-nine and change.
Almo- almost forty. But, close enough.
Yes. So.
So if they wanted to do the Popeyes larger, they could.
Well, and you know what? The only thing I'm thinking in my mind is of, why did they do this? Is if they eventually do wanna come back and ask for the pylon sign. Well, they gotta, you know, they could say, hey, guys, you know, we're twenty-four feet short. Um, we're twenty-four feet short on the building, so, you know. We don't have, we don't have views, so, you know, try to get something. I, I, again. They, I, I quite honestly will tell you, they did not have that conversation with me. I'm just, I was sitting in the car saying. Why didn't we go smaller?
Okay, I'm gonna just page through the package.
The only thing I could think of.
Okay, I'm gonna page through the package. We're on page two. We're now on page three with the.
Three foot medallion.
And that is also a standoff. Halo lit, clearly marked halo lit.
Yep.
Uh, page four, the. Front facade. Page five, the. Um.
The left and right.
Left and right elevations. Uh, page six is the.
Drive-through canopy.
Canopy. Page seven are the window canopies.
Yep.
And page eight is also a window and page nine are the shutters.
Correct.
I think we have a winner.
Yes.
So there's no, there's no rear elevation or did I just miss that?
Uh, there's, really the rear elevation is, there's a.
There's a dumpster.
There's, they exist, well, there's the existing exterior cooler box, which. We are going to replace it with a new exterior cooler box. But as far as signage or decor, there's really nothing.
Yeah, this is just the signage package.
Yes.
Can you forward this to me, Bill?
Pardon?
Can you forward it to me so I can include it with your email? To a building inspector?
In fact, I'll forward it to everybody.
Okay.
And Jose Altuve just popped out on the first pitch. Not that anyone cares.
Had anybody heard of the Red Sox first baseman before, say, a week and a half ago?
Was that, uh?
This is for Mark Dunn, uh.
Bobby or Kyle?
When, uh. We were at a planning board meeting when the earthquake happened in, uh, San Francisco or Oakland. Remember that, Jim?
Yeah. My sister was living in San, is living in San Francisco then, is, is still there now.
That's when it was at Campbell's Day.
Yeah, all right.
And, uh. So. Am I? Complete?
So I just want to, uh, yeah, I gotta make a, uh.
Motion.
Motion, uh. On twenty-one. So, uh, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the sign package, uh, dated, uh, ten thirteen twenty-one. Uh. Mark Halo. That's the motion.
Second.
You're. You're making a motion to accept it?
Yes, to approve the design package.
Motion in a sec, yeah, motion a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I will get an email out to that tonight and to, uh.
Thank you, Robert.
I thank you. And, uh, by the way. Uh, you know, unfortunately, I, I suffer from the same problem as you guys. I, I'm kinda interested in this stuff. Um. I think you really, you guys, somebody brought it up. You guys really gotta go talk to the guy that's taken down the Hojos because. He's looking for a tenant that he's not gonna find. I, I mean, well, going by the market down here, he's not gonna find that tenant to be, to build that three-story unit. So, get a mixed use in, have a little control over it. He already has an issue with the, uh, water table there, so maybe you could justify, um, some type of quasi. Half-in-ground parking garage that's at the subterranean level. And do a mixed use that he has some offices and then. What did you need? Twenty-four units? I mean, I don't know if you're gonna get all twenty-four, but. If you put something to that guy, you know, you might have a little control over him or at least a little leverage.
Well, thank you for your thoughts.
Thanks for your input. Would you be willing to come to Hadley and work with us on a friendly forty B? Number one.
Uh, you know what? I, I will tell you this. There's a town that I, I was on the planning board in my town and just. I, I took a little break just because I knew I had a couple of projects coming in front of the town, so. I didn't wanna be that guy that always steps down all the time. Uh, but, there's a town, uh. Down here in Jersey, everything that has a train connected to New York City. Has just lost its mind because everybody ran out of New York City. And, um. What, one of my buddies who's a civil engineer and he's the township engineer a couple towns over. And look, the laws are a little different and they're probably nicer up where you, where you guys are because, you know. This is Jersey. I, I understand the armpit that I, I live in. Um, and, uh, but still, he was able to get, basically, like. Set aside a couple of areas and one was a warehouse that they took as an urban redevelopment, but. So the town took it in a fashion that it wasn't an eminent domain. But under the regulations, and again, I don't know how they translate to Massachusetts. But under the regulations, they were able to declare a area of required, um. Reclassification and, and result, uh, remodel. Uh, that's not the right word and I just, for a lack of thinking of the right word. Uh, redevelopment, sorry, redevelopment. And they were able to at that point. Put notice out that it, it was going out for, uh, redevelopment. They were going to actually take control of the property. So that they could then. Control who they, who it gets sold to. And again, I don't know, now this is where, uh, the Esquire at the end of my name would help, but I only have an RA. Um, and then they were able to work it that way and I'm telling you, they, it's cra-. With the traffic, you'll see, um, it's crazy about how many units that got built, but. They at least were able to control, you know, they wanted a few things. Certain places are like, okay, well, you need to do a mixed use because we need some commercial here. Oh, you need to, you're next to the library, you need to do this, you know. They, they, they were able to get something out of it, so.
Alright, thank you.
It's a difficult thing to, to go with.
Well, I think we're gonna try to be proactive.
You're starting to break up.
Uh, yeah, well, I'm on the turnpike, so, well, good luck to your Red Sox.
Rob, Robert, at, at, Robert, at the town meeting Saturday, I was appointed the official. Town taster, so I think if we start off with two ba- uh, buckets of regular and two buckets of spicy, that'll be a start, okay?
You got it, absolutely. Good luck, guys, and, uh, good luck to your Red Sox. I'm a, I'm a disappointed Mets fan, so have a good, uh, have a good season.
We're already down one, nothing, but okay, thanks.
Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, who's pitching for the Red Sox tonight?
Nevada.
I don't know.
Nick Cannon.
So our next week, right now, you're, you were scheduled for the first Tuesday of November, but I don't think we're gonna have much.
But so.
We'll be just.
The second Tuesday, right?
Or the, the, the second Tuesday would be the sixteenth for the regulation. We wanna be involved in that one.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we have. Uh, ideal coming in for November.
Second.
November second. Um. This will be continued to November sixteen. Right, and then Kevin will be in December.
Seven.
Seven.
Our article that passed on Saturday, is that, uh, affected immediately or is there?
That was theoretically or technically, that was effective the first day of publication in a newspaper.
Okay.
So that was effective a month ago.
Oh, even before it passed?
If it, no, no, if it passed at town meeting, it's considered effective the day of first publication in a newspaper.
Oh, that's interesting. Okay.
Unless it's a subdivision, then that's another set of rules.
Okay.
So, yeah, they, if that, if that's true, then they don't need their zoning variance anymore.
Well, no, they still need a variance because they have that port cachet that's coming at the canopy is coming off the side.
Right, yes, they need that, yeah, for that, but they don't need it for the TDR.
Yeah.
Right. Okay. Anybody have anything else?
Just one, one point about. One to five lots and over five lots. Is there a concern if we vary the amount that people have to pay by lots? That, is there a due process problem, Bill, or whatever you wanna call it, that we're, we're, we're segregating people and not. Treating them equally?
Yeah, you probably do wanna be careful about doing graduated rates, uh. But, um. But maybe you just address that by, yeah, if you're gonna do an approval not required subdivision, no, uh. No charge and, but if you're gonna do a, um. A formal subdivision, then, uh.
Okay.
You know, it probably should be something, um. You just have to figure out how to word it.
Okay, sort of throw that out.
Yeah, I think you're, it's a good point. I think you probably don't wanna burden. Unless you were doing a declining balance, like. Twenty thousand per lot for the first five and fifteen thousand a lot for the next five.
Yeah.
But if you started in, uh, increasing balance, that would be a problem, I think.
Okay.
Okay.
So, no, I don't think I have anything else either.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Meeting is history. Thank you and thank you, John.